Councilmember Moss, would you be willing to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Sure, I did it recently, but I can do it again.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping track. If anyone else would like to do it, that's fine, otherwise.
You'll get my edits if I do it.
We'll go with you for now. Go ahead, then. We'll go with you for now, Councilmember Moss, and let's go ahead and get started. Okay, I'm going to call to order the Albany City Council meeting for Thursday, October 29th, 2020. This is a special meeting, and we'll begin with the call to order, which I've just done, and Councilmember Moss will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, I hope, with liberty and justice for all someday, but only if you go out and vote.
I accept those friendly amendments. Thank you. Moving on, next area of business is roll call. City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Nathan?
I am here. I am having trouble with the camera on my laptop. I'm working to resolve that, but I am here by voice.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Here.
Mayor Pilch?
Present. Thank you, and we'll move on to Item 3, which is the public hearing, the one and only agenda item for this meeting. It's about, it's the, Item 3-1 is the disposition and development agreement and categorical exemption from SEQA for the SAHA project. I have not read the entire description, but I'll just turn it now right over to staff for their presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. This is Jeff Baum, the Community Development Director. I'm going to provide you a brief introduction to our report and then turn it over to Ann Hirsch for a full presentation on the item before you. And so you're aware, Justin Fried is also available to answer questions, as well as our outside legal counsel, Raphael Yacquinnen, with Goldfarb and Littman. Due to the unique public noticing requirements associated with this project, we needed to set the time and date for this hearing three weeks ago, on Thursday, August, excuse me, October 8th. At that point in time, we knew there was a lot of work to be done and several unresolved issues, but we were confident that everything would be completed in time for action tonight. Despite an enormous flurry of activity over the last few weeks, we've come to the conclusion that it would be best if the city council does not take final action tonight, but rather continues action to a date certain of November 16th. We have, in the packet, as you've seen, there are a number of complex interrelated agreements and exhibits associated with the approvals before you, and a number of these documents have been revised in the last 24 to 72 hours. And we feel like, to do our due diligence properly, we should review that, and there are a couple of unresolved issues that we need a little bit more time to work on. We are prepared to give you a detailed presentation and answer any of your questions. We also encourage you to hold the public hearing, and we look forward to getting as much done as we possibly can this evening so that the final action would be hopefully relatively brief and straightforward on the 16th. We greatly appreciate the city council and community's patience with this process. It's a big project, and a lot of work has gone into it, and we just need a little bit more time. Before I turn it over to Ann, I'd like to just note for a moment the importance of this project. The challenge of creating affordable housing in Albany and other Bay Area cities is it's critical to overcome this challenge, and in doing so, I think we can contribute to a number of the city's policy goals. I'll just mention a couple of them. First, the creation of housing, particularly higher density housing, is important to reducing the generation greenhouse gases in our region. And perhaps, more importantly, at this particular point in time in our country, this is a project that is a potential significant proactive step towards addressing social justice issues and a step towards reversing what has been, in our country, decades of discriminatory housing policies. So with that big picture in mind, I'd like to turn it over to Ann, who has a presentation for you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So as Jeff mentioned, it's been a long road for this project. We've been at it for three years, and it's really been a team effort within the Community Development Department of Jeff, Justin Fried, our transportation planner, and myself, working collaboratively with SAHA. So before you tonight is the disposition and development agreement. Just to give you a little snapshot for this evening, we are going to give you the presentation. We are going to have you open up the public hearing so that we can receive public comment, and then, of course, close the public hearing, hold council discussion for any questions that you might have. And then, as Jeff mentioned, we're going to recommend that you continue this to a date certain of November 16th, 2020. Just to give you a snapshot of the scope of review, your purview this evening is limited to the disposition and development agreement. As we've mentioned in previous staff reports, the project's entitlements for this application were approved in December of last year pursuant to SB 35, which allows for a ministerial review of projects that meet certain standards for affordability. And so at the time that that was approved, included a design review and a density bonus for the project. And to refresh your memory on the actual project scope, it is 62 units of 100% affordable housing that will provide family housing. There is a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The building overall will be four stories in height, 52 feet, with podium parking, and it has a proposed density of 55 units per acre. In terms of parking, there are 64 interior bicycle parking spaces and 62 off-street vehicle parking spaces. And to give you a snapshot of the unit mix, there are two studio apartments, 23 one-bedroom apartments, 22-bedroom apartments, and 17 three-bedroom apartments. And this is a rendering from the approved plan set of a view facing the project from Cleveland Avenue at Washington. And to give you a more extensive background, this property was acquired with redevelopment funds. It's 4.5 acres total on Pure Street. It was formerly a Caltrans right-of-way. And in 2012, the city initiated a planning process. At that time, it was envisioned to be a municipal complex, which would include both park facilities as well as a maintenance center. As the council is probably aware, the park work has been completed. That was completed in 2017, and those plans for the maintenance center were abandoned due to construction costs. And then, more recently, because of the change in plans, the Albany 2035 general plan gave this a split land use designation. So the residential portion that's at Washington and Cleveland, the subject site, was given a land use designation of high-density residential, and the park is Parks and Open Space designation. Last year, we took zoning establishment ordinance to the city council to assign zoning designations that are consistent with those general plan land use designations. So approximately 3.32 acres, which comprises the park, has been zoned Public Facilities, PF, and the parcel for the residential development was zoned R3 High Density Residential to have consistency between both the zoning and the general plan. And this is a site plan of the property. This is the site for residential development. This is the property line, and then this is where the park is. And again, this is just the snapshot from the 2035 general plan that shows those land use designations. To give you some background on SAHA, satellite housing was founded in 1966 with the mission to provide affordable, service-enriched housing that promotes healthy and dignified living for people with limited options. As it relates to this project, SAHA reached out to city staff in the fall of 2017 to explore the feasibility of the site as a potential affordable housing of the project. They ultimately concluded that the site is indeed feasible for housing and that it can accommodate a mid-rise affordable housing project. As a result of that legwork, the city council gave direction to staff in June of 2018 to prepare an exclusive negotiating agreement with SAHA. And so what that did was set a term sheet and negotiating parameters to enter into the discussion of development of the site. And then the council took action on September 17th of 2018, formally authorizing the city manager to execute the exclusive negotiating agreement between the city and SAHA. To date, there have been three extensions that have been filed. As I mentioned, we've been at this for a while. So the initial ENA had a one-year term, and then two six-month extensions, both of which were exercised, and then more recently, an extension was granted in September. And now, as part of the term sheet and the exclusive negotiating agreement, SAHA voluntarily agreed to host two public workshops at the community center to introduce themselves to the community, as well as get input on the building design. So the first workshop was held on May 23rd in 2019 and provided very broad schematics of the project. SAHA and their design team then went back and refined their project plans based on the community input that was provided at that meeting, and more developed plans were presented at the second meeting on August 28th. And so what has been incorporated into the disposition and development agreement is consistent with the preliminary plans. There haven't been any changes to the project since it was approved pursuant to SB 35. And this is another view of the project from Pure Street Park. As we've discussed, we've been working with them diligently on this disposition and development agreement, and what that is, is a contract between developer and the city that involves the lease or the sale of city-owned land to the developer, and identifies the terms and responsibilities for the project construction. The overall objective of the DDA is to provide the site to SAHA at a nominal cost so that they can focus their financial resources on construction and affordability. Section 3 of the draft DDA indicates that SAHA will prepay to the city the 99-year ground lease in full in an amount of approximately $4.65 million. Simultaneously, the city will provide an interest-free loan of approximately $4.65 million at the time of their payment. And this has the net effect that no funds will ultimately change hands. As part of the DDA, public art, which was not included because the project was processed under SB 35, it will be included voluntarily by SAHA as an incorporation into the project. Under normal circumstances, if they were to comply with the full requirements, it would present a pretty significant financial hardship towards the project goals of providing affordable housing. However, SAHA is very much interested in providing this onsite for a reduced cost that will still provide a public amenity. Additionally, SAHA has voluntarily agreed to go all-electric with the construction. As the council is aware, our adopted climate action plan supports electric construction for new buildings. And so within Section 6.22 of the proposed agreement, it specifies this provision for all-electric construction. This includes all-electric fixtures, equipment, and appliances. One thing to note, though, you know, we have not seen construction drawings yet, so the greater details of this will be further reviewed when this project enters the building permit phase. With respect to the development schedule, there are low-income tax credits, which are allocated by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, and they are awarded to SAHA based on an application that is submitted to the committee. SAHA then sells the right to use the tax credits to a private investor with income tax liability. The proceeds from this sale are then used to construct the project. So one thing that we've built into the DDA is that SAHA has until September 30th of 2023 to apply for these tax credits to put towards the project financing. One other unique feature with this process is that it is subject to a 33433 report. And what that means is that, since this property was acquired with redevelopment agency funds, there's an additional provision within the state law that requires that this report be prepared and approved by the legislative body after the public hearing. So as part of your packet, we've provided that 33433 report, and it effectively serves as a disclosure document. It evaluates the project's costs, the estimated value, the purchase price, and the elimination of blight. So as part of that, we retained the services of SIFIL Consulting to prepare the report and to satisfy the requirements of the Health and Safety Code. With respect to the bike path, the city's general plan, a transportation element, and the active transportation plan call for a Class 1 shared-use path through the subject property as part of the Pure Street path alignment. The draft agreement before you includes the bicycle path easement that would establish access through the site connecting from the park to Cleveland Avenue. And the agreement also includes construction of the trail improvements on the subject property by the developer in exchange for a grant of $25,000 from the city. And just to give you some context, this is an aerial that was provided as part of their submittal. And you can see here, this is a rendering of the path, as it would connect down to Cleveland, and then also connect up here to the park. You can tell it's, you know, because of the grade challenges there, it's a pretty unique design, but that would be the way to make that work. And this is also a detail of that from their civil engineering plans that were submitted as part of the project review. Very recently, staff received a revised cost estimate that was significantly higher than the original $25,000 grant that was discussed. And for that reason, staff is seeking additional time to work through this with SAHA and come back to the council on November 16th. In terms of funding opportunities, we've come to the council several times in the last year for resolutions of support for grant applications that SAHA has applied for. We've been working with them jointly on their application filings, and we expect that this will continue well into the new year and beyond. There are a lot of grant funding opportunities available. To date, the project has received a grant through HUD for just under $2.7 million. We have an application into Alameda County for A1 money, which is currently under review. We worked with them to file an application for infrastructure infill. That was rejected, however, there is a window where we can reapply jointly in 2021. And there is currently an application for transit-oriented development grants that is under review through HCD. We don't yet know the status of that. With respect to policy implementation, the 2019-2021 council strategic plan has a goal of fostering a healthy and sustainable urban village. One objective of that is to promote housing availability and quality, and very specifically, it pertains to the development of affordable housing at Cleveland and Washington avenues in partnership with SAHA. There were three emails that we have received in response to the DDA, and that correspondence has been forwarded to the council. As part of your packet, we also included a resolution and a notice of exemption. For SEQA findings, the project does meet the standards of categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15332 in field development projects. And with that, we are asking that the council continue this matter to a date certain of November 16th. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and turn it back to the council if you have questions.
Thank you. November 16th would be the date of our second meeting in November, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Moss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few questions of different sorts. The bike path, what I noticed on the plans that were in the agenda, or at least one of the files on the agenda, is that the bike path seems to end at the property line on the uphill side at the park, and then there are stairs that you would go up to get to the rest of it. Am I looking at that correctly? I don't know who could take that one.
I can feel that question. So there's two parts to this. One was identifying how the path would connect with the future construction of the path on the park site. So SAHA did work on looking at the different alternatives, and this curve that you saw in the graphic is part of the ascent of the path. The rest of it would be constructed on the park side. So what they were showing in the plans was an interim step of the site work that would be done on their side on the property. And the one addition there with the steps was there would essentially, as it was shown, be an unfinished graded dirt path that would be fenced off part of their property until the bike path was constructed. It would be going to the door of a park, and so how could we have an interim access for the residents of the property until at which point the bike path was completed? In which case, the path would then serve as that access in the future.
So I would take it that this is more of a path, a walk path than it is at this point than an actual bicycle path. Okay, I don't recall that from some of the earlier plans we looked at over time, but... Another question I had is sort of a general one, I guess for Jeff perhaps. A lot of the paperwork that we were given in the agenda has our previous city attorney's name on it, Craig. I presume this is going to be changed at some point?
Yes, that's one of the little things that we want to go back and correct. We've been working on these documents since Craig was with us, and in some cases, his name lingered on in some of the documents.
Okay, and by our second meeting in November, they're likely to be changed. Will that change be anything more than just putting Mala's name where Craig's name is currently? Does BBK need to take a look at this and review it before you sign on?
Well, we... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Oh, I was just going to say, we're primarily working with Goldfarb and Littman, who are experts, and Raphael with Goldfarb and Littman, who are experts in affordable housing. Mala certainly is very knowledgeable, and her firm are experienced in this as well. So we can certainly review it with Mala, but on a day-to-day basis, Raphael is the kind of the lead legal counsel for staff on this matter. And we'll double-check that. There could be other changes. We don't think there will be a lot in terms of volume of changes, but there are a couple of issues that we need to talk through with him that we thought we were going to get sorted out. The cost of the bike path is one of them that came up just a day or two ago. So we will... The other thing of having a little bit more time is we'll be better prepared to highlight for the council any of the changes so that you can see, you can compare what you got tonight with what you will see on the 16th, and that will be clear.
Okay, and then one more question for now, anyway. The way I interpret the timelines that were in that, could we be talking about maybe four years before dirt starts getting dug out for this project? If all the limits on the timelines go to the end extent of more time as opposed to things rapidly falling into place?
So we have, in the meeting this evening, Eve Stewart, who is with SAHA, and she's probably better equipped to answer the question about the timeframe. I think what we hope, and I think everybody hopes, that it goes much more quickly than that. But each one of these funding sources is a competitive process, and we want to give them time to, and it's not unheard of for affordable housing projects, to take a couple of years to come to fruition, to collect all the funding. So maybe if we could give Eve an opportunity to address that, and perhaps we should have given Eve an opportunity just to introduce herself and the perspective from SAHA as well, just kind of a general introduction. So if the mayor is okay with that, maybe we can give Eve a chance.
Please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eve Stewart. I don't know if you guys can see me or not, okay? But I'm the vice president of real estate development at SAHA, and I think also on the call are James Conlon and Leslie Calerone with our group, who've been working for the last few years on this project. And really, I primarily want to say thank you on behalf of our team and on behalf of the whole organization for the opportunity to partner with the city and bring forward this housing opportunity that I think is really nicely designed development. We've had lots of collaboration. It's been a privilege working with city staff and the community to get it to where we are now, and we're very much looking forward to moving into the next phase of the project lifecycle, which, as Jeff mentioned, is really us going out and getting all the funding that we need. So we've started that process. We've worked with the county. We have been able to submit some applications to the state. We've been at a bit of a disadvantage because the state looks at other funding that's been committed. So until we have the DDA completed and we can show that the land contribution, and until we have the county funds firmly committed, we just don't score as well as we will once those pieces are in place. So really, 2021 is going to be about us going out and getting the state funding that we need, and we are very hopeful that we could be starting construction as early as 2022. But we have built some extra time into the schedule just to give us some cushion if we need it.
Okay, well, thank you for those answers. I have one other comment later, but I'm curious what other questions fellow councilmembers might have.
Okay, thank you. And the vice mayor has your hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a question about the grants. I see that we've gotten a grant from HUD. Does that money, or that grant expire at some point as we're going through the process? Or once we have it, we're kind of locked in until we say, yes, we're doing this, or God forbid, no, we're not?
I think that grant is pretty well locked in for the project. It's been firmly committed.
Super, thank you.
And Ms. Stewart, I did promote you to a panelist, so we should be able to see you if you turn on your camera. And then, Councilmember... Hello? And then, I think, Councilmember Barnes? Did you have your hand up at one point? No?
I did, but I have comments but not questions, so I'll save them for later for the closing.
I see. Okay. And then, so I have some follow-up questions then about the bike path. I want to make sure I have a complete picture. I also noticed the stairs that Councilmember Moss referred to. And then, I also noticed what seemed to be a gate on the path close to Cleveland Ave. And is that meant to perhaps be a gate until the path is... Is there meant to be a gate there until the path is finished, or something else? That's correct. The gate would be to secure the site until it's a publicly accessible path that would connect. Okay, but until such time, it's intended to be a way that the residents can reach the park? Is that correct?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then I know that we've had a, a few different versions of the, uh, the bike path. And, um, so I want to understand, I want to make sure I understand this completely now. Uh, we, uh, we're going, we were going to give a certain amount, um, to Saha, uh, as a, um, supplement to the funds for constructing the bike path. Uh, but, uh, you know, say, say that, say that that is still the case. I know, uh, Jeff, you mentioned that, uh, we, that those negotiations are still ongoing. But say were the case that this, we had a certain amount that supplemented, uh, the building of the bike path. Is the intention that, um, uh, Saha would be responsible for building their portion of the path in its entirety when there was also a project for the city to build their portion of the path in Pier, Pier Street Park? Did I get that all correct?
So, and if you could bring up the civil sheet, maybe that'll help. So this is part of the plans for the, that were approved in the, the planning package. Um, it shows the right-of-way of the, of the future bicycle path. Uh, it shows the grading work that, that Saha is proposing to do uh, in conjunction with their project, including a couple of retaining walls. Uh, and then it shows the alignment of the bicycle path that would be constructed in the future. What Saha is currently proposing in the approved documents is a four-foot access, essentially a sidewalk that connects along the southern side of the, the bike path. Um, and is essentially an access point for their residents, an emergency access point. So what we were proposing was to provide a city grant that would basically change from that four-foot sidewalk that they are required to do for their project to constructing the 12-foot future bicycle path so that we don't have to come back in and do that extra width later. So that's the mark, that's the difference that we were looking to exchange some city funds for, to not have to go in right next to where they're constructing that four-foot path.
I see, so the, the intention is to get that, the, uh, their portion of the bike path fully constructed, uh, uh, in conjunction or a, at the same time that we are, uh, completing the rest of the project?
That's correct. It, it would be completing the, the path adjoining their project so that we don't have to come back in through that area later.
Okay, all right. I think that, uh, does it for me, for my questions. Any, uh, thank you very much, um, and for that information. And any final questions from council members before we go to public comments? Uh, if not, uh, I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk to, uh, allow the public in.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Um, sorry, let me just mute. Oh, okay, I'll turn off my phone. Sorry about that. Hi, this is Nick Peterson. I'm a, uh, resident of Albany, have been here many years and, um, on the Climate Action Committee also. And a member of, uh, Albany, uh, several Albany groups promoting sustainable development. So I just want to say I'm very encouraged to see that the project is moving along and, uh, would like to recommend to the council that they still consider this all favorably. I'm sure this minor issues of the, um, bike lane will be worked out uh, and make sense. Seemed like that was maybe the, the final thing to put in there and some other agreements. But this is a big, this will be a, a major and very, um, impressive project for a city of Albany's size. I think it's, uh, laudable that we're creating so much affordable housing, that we're doing it in, in such a great partnership with a, uh, company that's dedicated to that. And that we also are building, uh, what is, or will be one of the most sustainable buildings in the entire city with its all-electric composition. So a, as a member of the Climate Action Committee, I'm very excited to see that. And I, um, am pleased to see that the, uh, that Saha made the commitment to designing the building in that manner. So that's, that's quite a coup for the city. And I think you are all to be congratulated for that. And I encourage you to support this project and continue to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead. Um, we are not able to hear you, although you appear to be unmuted.
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
This is Susan Renaud. I'm with the First Housing Working Group. And, um, I'm glad we're finally talking about this. It's been a long time since we had a report. And, um, I'm a little disappointed to hear that the funding phase is starting in 2021 because we were told almost two years ago that the funding phase had begun. Some of us were asked to write letters in support of, of specific funding. So we were also told that the, the prospective date for breaking ground was early 2021. So I, I haven't heard anybody explain why this has been so delayed. The other point I wanted to make was that while you say it's all affordable, we know that a percentage of the median income here still makes property very expensive. So what may be affordable is still too expensive for low-income people. And I'm still advocating that a large percentage of these be for very low income. I understand you have to have a balance. But in the past, I, I feel like you haven't allocated enough for very low income. Okay, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, David.
Hi, my name's David Greensfelder. And I am on the board of Saha, but I am speaking this evening in my capacity as an Albany resident. Um, I've, of course, been familiar with and following this project eagerly. And, um, I think that it's, uh, the kind of, the, the kind of project that we as a community, um, can really be quite cra, uh, quite proud of. And, uh, so I am, I'm fully supportive of the project. And, um, and, and also of, uh, our initiative and contribution as a community to addressing, um, the problem of homelessness, um, which we are in contact with and see every day. Um, I've, I've also been listening to some of the other comments and, and questions. And, um, I'm quite sure that there are, um, meaningful answers to all of them. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bonnie Jamison, go ahead.
Hello, thank you very much. Um, I have grown up here in Albany and I own a home here, um, in Albany. And, um, I'm going to be impacted actually by this build. And I'm quite concerned. Um, reasoning being is that right now we have homeless that are living underneath the overpass here. Um, along with, we have a lot of activity that occurs in the evening at Peggy Thompson Park. Now, with the increased number of units that will be taking place here, um, I'm very concerned of my safety. What is the city going to do in reference to ensure that we are going to be increasing our process to where this area is going to be, um, more, uh, patrolled by our city, uh, police? And with that, I, um, and is there going to be, um, lighting that is left on all night long in reference to the park when it comes to the bike path? Um, is that going to impact then, um, the surrounding area when it comes to, uh, viewability? Um, I'm just quite concerned, more activity, uh, more people, more foot traffic. That's my complete concern. What will the city be doing about that and our safety?
Thank you. Last speaker, please.
Go ahead, the other Bonnie.
Hello. Hi, my name is Bonnie. I'm also a homeowner. Um, I'm also going to be impacted by this build-out. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, I'm right next to Calhoun and I had a question about, is that going to remain a cul-de-sac? Second, um, I'm a little bit worried about the parking situation. It's 62 units and you guys are going to have about 62 off-street parking. But the average, um, resident usually have at least one to three cars. So I'm just wondering what you guys plan on doing about that? So, um, I live on Pier Street. Prior to COVID, Pier Street, there's major traffic on Pier Street. It's, it's down to, now it's like down to one to two miles per hour. What is it that you guys are going to do to sort of alleviate traffic? And keep people from, um, sort of just using only Pier Street as a thoroughfare? Is there another, is there something else that you guys are going to build, um, around these units? That's gonna, um, allow another thoroughfare to, let's just say, to the freeway? Or to Ranch 99 or to Costco and such?
Thank you, thank you for your comments. So I apologize, that was not the last speaker. We have a few more speakers, so, uh, next speaker, please.
Go ahead, Ian McLeod.
Hi, good evening, uh, council and staff. This is Ian McLeod. I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I just wanted to express my support for this project. I think it's something that we, um, should be proud of. I think we really need to be providing more affordable housing in our community. Uh, and we don't have that many opportunities to do it. So, um, you know, this is a great thing to be doing. I'm very pleased that it's going all-electric from a sustainability point of view. Um, you know, it's going to be much more efficient that way. And I would hope there's maybe some solar panels on the roof. I haven't seen that in the plans, but hopefully that's going to be accommodated somehow. Uh, you know, I would also like to echo one of the previous speakers that said that there should be a greater allocation for low and very low-income, uh, units. As part of our housing element, our future housing element, um, staff has told us that, um, it's estimated that in the Bay Area, it would be something in the area of 450,000 units are needed, of which 15% should be low-income and 26% should be very low-income. So, uh, trying to include or improve that in our mix, I think, would be important somehow. Um, otherwise, we don't really get opportunities in the city of Albany to get very low-income units. Um, for-profit developers usually don't include very low-income units. Uh, that's something we may be able to look at in the planning code in some changes in the future. But, um, this is a great opportunity to get that into the mix. And, um, I'm also pleased that there's a big allotment for bike parking, at least one space per unit. That's really good. I think the parking is perfectly adequate. It's actually probably more than adequate. Um, it's part of our San Pablo Avenue-specific plan studies. Uh, our consultants have told us that, uh, studies of other recently built-out, um, housing projects, uh, the parking is utilized at about 75%. So at one unit, uh, one parking unit per, uh, one parking space per unit. So one space per unit should be adequate. I think it's great to be providing active transportation alternatives. Um, you know, with the, in conjunction with the bike path, allowing people not to be able, or to be able to not use their cars. I think that's great. We need to provide alternatives to car use and that helps alleviate parking issues as well. So that's it, I just, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Alamarras, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I want to thank, um, Saha and city staff for, um, creating this affordable housing project in Albany. Um, I'd like to see the progress to be a little bit faster, but I understand your constraints and I really appreciate the efforts you're making. On the 20% um, area median income units, um, are, are they still priced, um, hopefully at $436 to, um, $604 per month, um, depending on whether it's a studio or a three-bedroom apartment? Um, and is it feasible to get these costs down by putting two beds in one bedroom and allowing, uh, more, more people to, um, be in some of these units? Um, hopefully you get the price under $200 a month for an individual in a bed and shared space. Um, I'm also like to you confirm that there are going to be solar panels to feed all of this electrical appliances. Um, makes a lot of sense if you can do it. Um, also concerned about the funding. We have three of the four funding grants confirmed. Um, it seems to me the county A1 funds should be secured. I mean, we were allotted that, I think, by the county when we passed A1. So hopefully that gets confirmed fairly soon. Um, and just keep up the pressure on getting the rest of those grants so we can move forward as quickly as possible. I know we need the evidence of funding, um, before we can start construction. And it should be nice to get that construction going sometime next year. Um, hopefully by the middle of the year. Um, so, um, thanks again for all your efforts. Um, this is greatly needed and greatly appreciated project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Go ahead, Jeremiah.
Hi, thank you, Ann. Keep up the good work. Hey, everybody, keep up the good work. Uh, what a great thing for Albany, um, affordable housing. And yes, this project has been a, a working project for a long time. And, uh, we're so close. And, um, I know we have Alameda County's support and pretty much most of Albany. Um, because I just pretty much think it's, it's fair for everybody to have affordable housing. And, um, you know, one, one idea upon interest is, um, I'm not sure if there's going to be a bus stop or, uh, something available for public transit. Um, but yeah, I, I definitely, you know, moved to motion to, to vote yes on this. And, um, you know, I would, I would second and third it if I could. Um, and Mr. Maris, uh, your opinion is very, very mindful. And you're right that, um, this is going to be very good for the community. And we have these grants already lined up. And I just, I just support this. I just want to support this. And sure, there's going to be pros and cons about every situation, right? Like even putting all those Gateview condos, um, in front of Albany Hill. You know, um, you know, it's just, just a thing, you know? But there's tennis courts and a swimming pool. And everybody's happy that actually has a room, roof over their head. And, um, these housing crises in the Bay Area, there's more and more, you know, people that need affordable housing. And, um, definitely through COVID, all these things, there's a lot more people in the community and the world that need more affordable housing. need more affordable housing. And just housing in general. I mean, let's say this wasn't typically affordable housing, but it was just housing. You know, housing is a must and it's a mandatory thing anyway. The Bay Area is only so small and there's only so many square miles. So if we can't build out anymore, you know, we have to build up. So, you know, building up is a good thing. So if that's what we can do, that's what we can do. And, and of course, look at all these great things, solar panels, all-electric. And everything's new construction and it gives people a fresh start. You know, it gives children a fresh start and a roof over their head because a lot of misconception that people aren't realizing is this is housing for children. It's not just grown adults. This is families and children and kids too who are trying to go to school that just need a roof over their head and some stability. And I believe, I believe the kids deserve this. I believe the kids deserve a chance. And babies, they'll keep up the good work.
Thank you. And that does appear to be our last public speaker. And I'll bring the discussion back to the council now. Does the staff or the guests wish to address any comments or public questions at this time?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is Eve. I did want to clarify that the county A-one funds have been committed. So we're, we're through that process, which is great. And then I know a couple of folks asked about the rent levels and I wanted to clarify that two-thirds of the units at the building are for very low-income households. So about forty of the, of this, forty-one of the, of the sixty-one units that will be for families are at that very low-income level, including thirteen units that are at the twenty percent AMI level that Mr. Maris mentioned. And that rent level is right around four hundred and fifty dollars a month for a studio and about four eighty a month for a one-bedroom.
Thank you for that. And any other staff at this time? Or, or guests? I'll just, I'll throw out one that I heard, and I think I know the answer to, whether Calhoun Street would remain a cul-de-sac. My understanding is that there's no changes to Calhoun Street at this time. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. No changes to Calhoun Street. There will be an emergency exit stairway. Actually, emergency access so that the fire department can stage on Calhoun and get down to the site if necessary, but that would be for emergency use only.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, well, I've written down some of the other public questions and comments and we might come back to those, but Councilmember Moss does have his hand up, so let's go to him for his points.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have some general comments here and a bit of a question. You know, this is an important project. I am so thankful to staff and to SAHA for, you know, to keep their nose to the grindstone and keep working on this project. You know, it's something that Albany needs and I, I understand a bit about construction and I understand that even in the private sector, it's very difficult to get projects of this size along. And when you add the, the conditions that you guys are working with, I, I can see that this is not something that can go very quickly. I, my little side comment on, on some of the issues that you're facing right now, this bike path. I, I know that this was in the original plans for planning when we were going to have a park and a public work center there. I've never quite understood what the, where this bike path is supposed to go. It's, to my mind personally, it's the bike path to nowhere. I like bike paths. I think we should have more bicycle infrastructure in the city, but to connect Pier Street to Cleveland, I'm not quite sure how much traffic that's going to get. So I, I hope that that issue does not hang things up. You know, the path is great, but trying to figure out how to do a bike path up a steep incline like that is a lot of wheels are going to be spinning to try to get that actually functional. You know, the comments about low and more, the need for low, more, more low-income housing, I, I certainly agree with. But I also understand, given how these projects are financed, that's not as easy as I think many people in Albany would like to see. So in case we, so unless we are able to put forth a bond measure that can pay for a lot of this stuff and, and get it passed on a statewide level, I, I think this is probably as good as it's going to get on, on this kind of level project. My final comment on this, I think, is that, you know, in the process length of time this is going to take between when this started in twenty eighteen or so and is now you know, who knows how far into the future it's going to be. It'll, I'd be curious to know how many ADUs get built in Albany. As far as I can see, there's been a steady stream of them being built. They're becoming very popular. My neighbor right behind me is in process of putting in an ADU. That might actually offer the easiest and quickest way for us to, to meet some of our housing needs. So for anybody who's watching tonight and thinking about that, please, go ahead, you know, do it. This is something that, that will help fill some of the gaps because these larger projects, they, they take a while. So that's my two cents for tonight. I, I look forward to hearing about this in the second meeting in November.
Thank you, council member. I'll just interject with one thing I heard. Perhaps I can clarify some things I heard from the audience, which is that although solar panels, PV panels would be great, I, I do not believe they are proposed with this project instead. And however, they might, they might happen in the future. I'm, I'm, I'm sure that's a possibility, but what's being proposed is all-electric construction in that there'll be no natural gas piped into the building. No, no fixtures will be natural gas-powered. And if I've given, I've forgotten any of that wrong, staff, please correct me, but I believe that that's, that's the case.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do believe that the intent is to have some solar panels. I think it's a mix of photovoltaic and solar hot water, but the details of that depend, will, will evolve over time with the building permit design process.
Oh, okay. Oh, wonderful. Well, even better. That's, that's all great. And hopefully I know that there's some grant opportunities out there for solar panels as well. Perhaps they can be taken advantage of. But now on to Councilmember Barnes has his hand up next.
All right, just a few comments. You know, following up on Councilmember Moss's comment on the bike path, that's pretty steep for a bike path. I believe it's going to be about five percent. So I remember where you heard it first and I'll, I'll take bets on this. The group that's going to discover this bike path first are skateboarders, because that's an ideal slope for skateboarding. And I don't know how you're going to control that. If you ride your bike up, say, Old Tunnel Road, that's about four or five percent. Grizzly Peak is a teeny bit steeper. There's often kids commandeering those roads for skateboarding. So, and that's quite dangerous. But just please keep that in mind. You know, about the additional parking traffic issues, I do want to say that five fifty-five Pier Street, the towers just down the road only have one parking space per unit. Because that was constructed before our Measure D in the late nineteen seventies. So I don't think that as far as traffic and parking issues go, sixty-two new, new units is not a lot compared to the hundreds and hundreds that they already have in five fifty-five Pierce. So I'm not sure that's a big issue. What, what really is at stake is whether how much parking is going to be down on Cleveland. I think that's where the overflow would go. Grading, you know, we constantly hear there's not enough space in Albany to add dog parks or pickleball courts or soccer fields or what bicycles call pump track, obstacle courses for kids on mountain bikes, basically. It seems to me, given that some of that unprogrammed space down at a Pier Street Park is going to become in contention for those kind of uses. So my hope is that it would be great if we could coordinate any design and building of facilities at Pier Street Park that require grading with this project, because it would make it much more cost-effective once you have grading equipment down there. This is probably wishful thinking because I'm not sure how well the timelines are going to coordinate. But if, for example, we wanted to put a small artificial turf playing field down there someplace and we needed to do some grading, the time to do it would be when SAHA is doing the grading down there anyway. Same is true for pickleball courts. We just went through that controversy again recently. Just something I, I'll be long gone by then, but I would like the staff to keep that possibility in mind. The only other comment, I think is a general rule in cities, the more eyes on the streets you have, the safer it becomes. Not the less safe it becomes. You know, someone who commented on that was the famous Jane Jacobs, who wrote The Death and Life of Great American Cities, who talks about how once you have a critical number of eyes on a street, it becomes safer. And it was actually well-intentioned city parks that no one could see into is where you started getting trouble with gang activity and whatnot. And I know my, from my personal experience, you can, in many neighborhoods in New York City, you can get off the subway at two in the morning and feel safe because there's still so many people on the streets. Which is not my kind of lifestyle, but you know, it is what it is. So I think in general, that area around Pier Street Park could benefit from having more people there, especially more kids using the play structure, which seems painfully underutilized to me. Given how much effort we put into that over the years. And, you know, that's it for my comments. Thanks.
I'll just interject that I thoroughly agree with Councilmember Barnes's conclusions about the number of eyes on the street and the safety and vitality that a place, a street gets when there are people there. And was there another council member who wanted to speak at this time? Oh, two nodding, two shaking heads. Okay. Well, let me throw in my comments. And I think, I'm not sure if I thanked the members of the public for coming and listening and speaking. Thank you to all of you who are here. Oh, I just wanted to make sure I understood. I was having, I exchanged some email with staff right before this. That the, the documents that we are looking at were somewhat kind of frozen last night and there have not been any updates during the day today. Is that correct?
You're correct, Mr. Mayor. There, there continued to be a work in progress. We don't want to have continually changing documents on you, so hopefully the next set you get will be the final draft ready for your formal action.
Yeah. And since I mentioned it, staff and, or I want to appreciate the staff for, and the consultants and SAHA for all their work. I mean, if you just take a look at the series of documents that need to be produced for something like this, so you'll, you'll get a sense immediately for how a complex a project this is. My understanding is that these projects are always complex due to the number of grants that have to be procured and the, all the covenants that have to be secured and, and all, all the details that, that are needed. And I really appreciate that there are organizations like SAHA doing this work and, and I appreciate, you know, staff. Appreciate staff works in this, staff's work in this as well. I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a big ask. But it's, it's very important to this project. I think, let's see. Speaking to the bike path, I'm going to disagree with Councilmember Moss. You know, we, trails get constructed in segments. We could have called the Bay Trail a path to nowhere because it did not go through Albany until very recently. So was that a path to nowhere or was that a path that just needed to be constructed in segments? I think it's the latter. We have a path in front of Pier Street already, which was a very nice path, which started the which started, I believe, the, the, what was intended to be the, the, this path, which is also to take a segment along Pier Street north, sorry, south of that existing path and then connect through the park to this. So that's, that's the intention. That's been in the books, been in the plans for, for quite some time. So I think we, we should continue on and build this thing in segments because that's we, we all, we built everything out for car infrastructure and now we're having to shoehorn things in and this is just the way it has to go. We do have to build things in segments. Oh, as far as funding, so, so not only are these complex projects, but the funding has to come from somewhere and that's, you know, comes from grants from all over the place, state, county, federal entities. All are contributing to this project. In essence, you know, the projects like this have to be subsidized. Which is fine. And that's how these things have to be built. But that also means that they are trade-offs have to be made about, you know, where the money gets spent because the money is finite. And I would love to see more affordable housing built in Albany, including very low income, but it takes money. And so it either takes projects like these or one thing for councilmembers who will still be seated in two years to consider and for perhaps future councilmembers to consider is to, to go out for a bond measure for affordable housing. Emeryville did this and Berkeley did this two years ago, I believe. And so that's one option that the, that the city has politically to, to get more of this stuff built. And I'll just say, you know, I, I, I do believe that the parking is going to be adequate. I have heard from various sources that you know, considering this is housing for very low income and low-income folks, it takes a lot of money to own a car. And so I can imagine folks with lower incomes making the choice to have fewer vehicles because they, that's just one more large expense. This is on a, very close to a bus route. This is very close to a freeway where car, car cleaning can be done. It's close to bicycle facilities. I think that, I, I don't think the parking is going to be an issue. I look forward to touring more. And this is what I've heard from other affordable housing developments. I look forward to touring more and and, and also note that the demographically fewer cars are owned over time in general by, by people going forward. And finally, I'll just say that I, I'm, I'm I'm so thrilled. I was looking at these documents last night and noticing that my name was underneath a lot of them, because as a mayor, you, you know, you get to sign these and I was, I'm, I'm just, I'm tickled pink that it's going to be my name under some of these documents because I, I think that I, this is a wonderful thing this council is doing for the city and for people of low income. And I think modern affordable housing developments don't depress anything. They, I think they're attractive and they will only increase and enhance the worth of this neighborhood. And the, the fact that we're going to get more people on the street and also the fact that we're going to get diversity of income, diversity of people. We're going to bring a diversity into this neighborhood. I think all of these things mean good things for this neighborhood. And I, I only see this as a good thing for the, for the current residents there. I'll stop there. I think that does it for me. Councilmember Nason, you do have your hand up now, so. hand up now, so we'll go to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to second what Mayor Pilch said about the bike path. I think that it is an important connector. I do see the danger and problems that are being pointed out by councilmembers Moss and Barnes. But I think it's also important we keep in mind that bike paths are not only for bikes, they're, they're pedestrian paths as well. There will be people coming down to go over to the, to the shops along at Cleveland and Jacuzzi and, and on to Point Isabel, you know, there will, this will be used by a, a good number of different kinds of users. And despite the, the terrible challenges of the grade, I hope that we will continue to prioritize getting the segment done. And as Mayor Pilch said, you know, it's part of a, a larger project that, that needs the other pieces in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And just one more thing that I forgot to mention, which is, I'm also thrilled by the project going all-electric. This will have the potential of introducing a new construction, new building into the city with no, no effect on our greenhouse gas inventory, you know, once, assuming that the electricity is clean going in. So, so I think that's huge. And thank you to SAHA for, for making that happen, and to, and to staff. And I'm not seeing any more hands up. Any final comments from councilmembers? Oh, I'm sorry. It, I understand that as written now, or as, as, as it stands now, this is more of an informational item, or one of the first hearings of this tonight, and action will be taken at our November 14th meeting. Or, or is there an action that we need to take tonight?
Yeah, we will need the council to formally continue this to a date certain of November 16th.
Oh, right, right. Thank you for the reminder. Okay. Please.
We continue this to a date certain of November 16th? Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor McQuaid and a second by Councilmember Nason to move this to a date certain of November 14th, 16th, sorry, correct. And is there any final discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to make sure that we're getting clear directions. So we're not hearing any major changes in direction, so we'll package up the final documents, resolving the last remaining issue or two, including the bike path, to get clarity on that cost. And then you'll see it essentially in, in the form that you have on your agenda this evening, but with the documents finalized. And I just wanted to mention one other thing for members of the public who are interested in kind of the financing part of this. One of the exhibits is our, our, that 33533 report that Ann mentioned, and it is, it does have some information on there about the, the income, rent levels, and the sources, potential sources of financial assistance. So it's a little bit easier document to read than, than many of the legal documents. And I also should mention that our, our financial consultant has been in on the meeting today as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge your time this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I'll just, and, and thank you for the question. So that's also my understanding. I'm not hearing any major changes being requested from the council tonight. So unless I'm, unless I'm incorrect, and there's further discussion, seeing none, then I think we can go to the roll call vote. City Clerk?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Pilch?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, there I see no other items on the agenda for tonight. This is the, the last item. I want to thank staff and thank our, the legal counsel and SAHA for being here as well, and thanking the public. And if there's nothing else from staff, then I'll say we are adjourned, and good night, everybody.
Good night.